Hello. I'd like to call this January 15th meeting to order and can everybody please join me and rise for the Board of Alleg- the - the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Mrs. Stover.
Mrs. Applebaum, here. Mr. Applebaum?
Here.
Mr. Dangier?
Here.
Mr. Major?
Present.
Mr. Snogerman?
Here.
Dr. C. Ortino?
Here.
Mrs. Feldman?
Here.
Special recognition, this is everybody's favorite one, calling Dr. Marty.
Self-organizer. Tonight, we have the pleasure, and really honestly, it is a pleasure, to have special recognition of our Board of Education. Oftentimes, our Board of Education is recognizing a lot of other people, but the Missouri School Board Association has designated January 26th to February 1st as School Board Recognition Week. It's a few weeks away, but we don't have a board meeting until February, so we're going to do this recognition tonight. We are pleased to recognize the school board members for their volunteering, their time and energy to protecting the best educational interests and providing the best education for our students, and their continued dedication to the excellence within the Parkway School District. Their pledge to students, our school, and the personal commitment that they have provided has earned them this honor. The mission of the Parkway School District is to ensure all students are capable, curious, and confident learners who understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world. While the Parkway Board works each day to make sure that this mission is a reality and holds the school district administrators, myself and my team and all our administrators accountable, and to their credit, I think we have made some great progress, and their leadership has been very vital to the work of the mission and the work of the school district and the achievement that we've been able to celebrate. So, at this time tonight, we like to recognize a certificate to our board members, plus a gift, and it is my pleasure to start that parade of recognition. We happen to have myself and my six members of the superintendent action team match the number of board members, so we're pleased to have all of us being able to participate. I do want to say that besides the certificate, we are recognizing our board tonight with a couple of small books. We know you're busy, so we don't want to give you a lot of reading, but we want to give you something that is meaningful. We're presenting our board tonight with a book by Sam Parker called Smile and Move. Smile and Move encourages us to get the most out of our team with positive and service-oriented efforts, and we think it matches what our board is all about. So, that's one of the books, and the other one is called Learning Curve, and it's from our work with Kaplan Educational Journal, which provides us with a lot of resources. And this is a collection of some great cartoons, so I think you're going to enjoy the cartoons in this book, and people like you, Sam, you're going to be really relate to this, because so much of it is humorous to people who serve in schools, but I think you're going to get a big kick out of it. You'll recognize a lot of things that you've heard about or seen in our schools, so we're going to present those to you, as well as the certificate. And I will just indicate that our certificate will honor each of the boards for Missouri School Board Association Week, and again, for their dedicated leadership to public education and continuing service to the children of the community. At the end, I'll come back and actually have one proclamation I want to read from Jay Nixon. I'll do that after our presentation. So, it's my pleasure to recognize Beth Feldman, our board president, and I just want to say that I have really appreciated Beth's leadership, and really a partnership in working with Beth in so many ways. We oftentimes have the pleasure of being places together, and for Beth or I to be able to be at ceremonies or activities, and I just wanted to tell you, it's always a pleasure, because Beth recognizes the absolute best in our students, and she's always really concentrating on our students and our community. Her leadership is really evident in terms of how she recognizes both the board and the interests of the community, and always positive in her approach and always complimentary. So, Beth, you really, I think, represent this board and this community very well, and we're very, very proud to have you as our president. I think all board members would agree with me, but us as administrators who have a chance to work with you really appreciate your leadership, and also your ability to challenge us appropriately. I think you also keep pushing us, and I think that's the role of the board, and it's particularly the president. So, it's my pleasure, Beth, to present you the certificate and the gift. Okay, I think the next person up is Desi.
Thank you, Dr. Marty, and I have the honor of presenting to someone who has served a couple of times as president on our school board. Matter of fact, I don't remember any time in my time in Parkway that she wasn't a board member. I believe it's at least since 2004. So, quite, when we talk about Smile and Move in the book, it's dedicated to serving with a smile. I can't think of anybody that it might exemplify more, Dee, since I've known you. Not only just serving as president in the past and vice president now, but your commitment with your three kids that have gone through Parkway Schools, and I guess, talking with you, you've made volunteer efforts since the early 90s, so, of course, yeah, strike that from the record. She was very young, that was as a student at Piermont, no. But also, just the leadership through Prop R, through Prop S, working with you on the steering committee through Project Parkway and where we are now, and I know the future. One of the quotes that was attributed to you was that you'd said one time, "I believe that every child deserves challenging curriculum, a safe nurturing school environment, and a commitment to academic achievement." And I think that exemplifies what you do and what you strive for. All in all, you're just a wonderful person, so I really appreciate it. So, thank you, Dee.
So, Thomas Edison once said, "I never did a day's work in my life, it was all fun." Chris, I think that must be one of the mottos that you live by. Chris has served on the board since 2008, and I've had the pleasure of getting to know him, and I would certainly say that as we work together to serve our community, Chris ensures that we enjoy our time together, and that is so important. Chris, I read some of your background and bio, learned some things about you, but I think the piece in your background that is the best qualification to serve in this volunteer position is your role of father and grandfather of children who have been Parkway students. So, Chris serves on the Teaching, Learning, and Accountability Advisory, as well as the Student Services Advisory, and every time we meet, Chris asks good questions and challenges, but also encourages us to do good work and to continue it, and, Chris, we certainly appreciate In your bio that's on the board, it talks about how you have, through your service, you've come to know and appreciate what it takes to provide a school environment where all children can come to learn and be prepared for life. Our mission talks about all, and you hold us accountable for that. We appreciate it. And finally, I have to come back to the spirit of Chris and what he brings to our work. I never leave one of our advisories or one of our meetings without a good opportunity for laughter, and that is so important in our work. Victor Borg once said, "Laughter is the shortest distance between two people." Chris, you use laughter to help build relationships, and that is so important. Thank you for your work.
I have the opportunity to recognize Sam this evening, and Sam, you have served our community longer than you have been a school board member, which is since 2010. You have a lasting and a very long legacy here in Parkway, and when we think about our mission, not only is he advocating for our mission now as a board member, but Sam has been advocating for Parkway's mission and for all students for many years through his lens as a building administrator and district administrator. When we thought about the book for this evening, Smile, I thought about you. You always have a smile on your face. You always have such a pleasant countenance that makes anyone in the room feel warm and connected to you, and as a board member and a member of our community, serving our public, that is so incredibly key and so very important. So, Sam, on behalf of all of us, thank you for all that you do and all that you will continue to do to serve us and our students here in Parkway.
I had the opportunity to recognize Kim Applebaum. Kim is still the newest member of the board, but she has served our board since 2012. She also has the wonderful experience of always being compared with Tom, and we have to introduce everyone to Kim and Tom Applebaum, no relation. So, it's always easy to pick out Kim. The board members not only come to board meetings and spend a lot of time with our schools, but they also have lots of committees they serve on, too. And Kim serves on the SSD Governance Council, the TLA Subcommittee, and Early Childhood Committee. So, all of those committees have kept her busy, and she's probably lucky, if she hasn't been on the HR Finance Committee yet, maybe she's avoided that in some way. I always appreciated Kim because we were talking about smiles and things, but we know how to get a smile out of Kim, is give her chocolate, she's good, and you might get a yes vote, or whatever you were looking for, if you have enough chocolate. But the last thing that I think was so impressive was when we were having our United Way meeting, and you always know that board members, no matter what area they're elected from, care about all kids, but Kim took the time to come to that United Way meeting and really share personal, very personal story about her upbringing and the things that really made, and you realize why she wanted to be a board member at that point, because of her time as a child and what that had meant to her, and the fact that she wanted to keep serving children. So, thank you very much for serving.
And I have the privilege of recognizing Mr. Bruce Major. He is, I believe, in the last year of his second term on the board, former president of the board, very active parent, a community member, spouse of a Parkway staff member, and one of the great legal minds of our Board of Education. He's actually a great person, I found out personally, he's a great person to know when you get a speeding ticket on the way home from a board meeting at 10 o'clock at night, so. He's been a privilege to work with, he's always asked the tough, quality questions, and, well, actually causes us to do our homework and make sure that we're doing everything we can for the kids in Parkway. Thank you, Bruce.
I have the honor of recognizing Tom Applebaum tonight. Tom was elected to the school board in 2010 and re-elected in last year, so we will have him hopefully for at least a few more years. Tom is a Parkway graduate, Parkway North High, and is an attorney in private practice. He's also involved in the community in a variety of issues, helping to support efforts to be green and energy conservation efforts and so forth. He's been very instrumental in Parkway, and as some of you may not know, also in the St. Louis region, and is a leader in that effort. But, in my mind, perhaps the thing Tom is known the best for is for putting on a parade. As some of you may know, a couple of years ago, Parkway had a huge parade to honor military veterans coming back from the Iraq War when it was winding down. What some of you may not know is that that was Tom's brainchild, and he and a colleague of his sat down one day and said, "You know, we ought to put on a parade." And it's one thing to think of something like that, but it's another thing to pull it off, and I had the pleasure of participating in that parade with my oldest son. And I can tell you, as we rode down Market Street, and 10,000 or so people involved in the parade, and over 100,000 spectators, it was unbelievable. And I literally sat there and thought, "We would, none of us would be here if it weren't for Tom Applebaum." And it's just amazing what you can do if you have an idea and a passion to pursue it, and I know that that's the kind of thing that Tom does every day. That's the reason he serves on the school board, to help support our students and getting involved and carving out time for important efforts. So, on behalf of the students and staff and administration, our community, we want to thank you, Tom.
I just want to thank my colleagues for taking the time and doing some research and really making this very personal, and I just want to say, sometimes when asked what makes Parkway a great place to work, you know, it's about the ability to work as a team, and I'm so appreciative of our team, but also our ability to work together as administrators and board of education. That's not a given, and in a lot of places, sometimes that is, does not happening, but it's happening here in Parkway. So, again, I thank my colleagues, but also board members for really working together as a team, and it really has produced a wonderful results, but also wonderful relationships and a great environment for, hopefully, not just us, but for the whole district. I'm now going to just read and then present to President Feldman the proclamation from the office of the governor. Whereas a system of quality public education is essential to the future of our state and nation, and whereas the people of Missouri have a strong tradition of support for public education and their local school districts, and whereas local school boards are the ultimate expression of the unique American institution of representative government for public education in districts, and whereas local school boards acting on behalf of and in close connections with the people of their communities chart the direction of the education of their communities, and whereas local school boards serve as a key community advocate for children, youth, and public schools, now therefore, I, Jay Nixon, Governor of the State of Missouri, do hereby proclaim January 26th to February 1st, 2014, as School Board Recognition Week, and urge all Missourians to recognize school boards as they strive with their communities to improve public education throughout their quality, through their quality of leadership. And again, I am so pleased to be at Parkway where we really are living out that mission and that proclamation. So, Beth, on behalf of, I guess, on behalf of the governor, it's my pleasure to present this proclamation to you and the school board.
It's my time to speak again. Just going off script for just a minute, and let me tell you that you all might look at us and see seven people who are always smiling and always happy and always in agreement, but the reality is, is we are seven people who come from seven different places with different aspirations, different political ideas, different life experiences, and different passions, and the beauty of this board made up of these seven people is that we each bring our own unique perspective and individualism to the board, and we are a great mixture of business leaders, attorneys, parents. We all make our own contributions, and I think that it's to our credit that we are able to present the face, the public face that we have to you all, that you, we always tend to agree in the end, because we keep focused on one thing, and I think you all know what that one thing is, and I'll just say it out loud, and we care about the students, and we bring everything we have to the table to make our students' lives better, and it's a joy and an honor to serve with you all, so thank you. All right, we're going to go on from there. 4.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. We are adding an executive session on January 28th, 2014, and we are adding Agenda Item 16.0. 5.0 citizen statements, I don't think that we have any, oh. Let's see, Wade Weiser, hi, come on up. Can you please state your name and your address?
My name is Wade Randall Weiser. I live at 168 South Down Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017, in case you didn't know that. First, I want to thank the members of the board for the opportunity to speak, and thank the members of the audience for a moment of their time. While I am in uniform, and I'm here, obviously not representing the United States Army, if they were going to represent themselves, they wouldn't choose me, I'm sure. And that's, as far as I have, is for preparation. I didn't really come here prepared, that's why I'm in uniform. It's kind of a spur-of-the-moment decision. I found out there was a board meeting, and after such a wonderful presentation, I apologize for bringing the mood down a little bit, but the reason why I'm here is my concern. I'm here, actually, as a parent. My daughter goes to Parkway Central High School, she's a freshman there. I have three more children that are on the way into the Parkway School District. So, the reason why I'm here is to address kind of the growing epidemic we have of school shootings, okay? And what I'm asking the board to consider, I know I'm not going to get an answer here today, is to really consider what we're doing as far as security issues. I'm sure there was some reanalysis done, but it's kind of gone from just kind of a once-in-a-blue-moon type event to, it's almost like an epidemic right now. I mean, it's, again, Roswell, New Mexico, just happened. So, I've gotten to a point where that's why I'm here. I came straight from work, actually, on active duty at Fort Leonard Wood, so I drove all the way here just to be here tonight for this purpose. So, I'd ask you guys to please give additional thought. If you don't already have a severe, serious plan in place, please put that in place. Start seriously analyzing this situation. I know you can't reveal all the tactical decisions that are made, obviously, for that, you know, for the purpose of not revealing that information, but I think the parents really need, I don't have the sense that there's been a lot of change in the way we've enacted security recently, so that's one of the things, as a parent, I think maybe we need to push that information out, so maybe it's just a comfort level, like a lot of action was taken the last year, and we're just not aware of it. So, that's something I think parents need to know. If those actions have not been taken over the last year, and security has not been reviewed compared to some of the best districts and some of the new actions that are being taken, I'm sure, across the country, that those are being done, including things such as making sure that the students have an opportunity to identify the precursors that lead to these. I mean, it's obvious that these things can be stopped before it's at the door, okay? So, security starts way before that. So, these are the types of things that I ask the board to really consider, have a real serious plan, because, you know, the number one thing is, for every parent, is that our kids come home safe. So, thank you for the moment of your time. I look forward to your response. Thank you.
See a response from us in writing. Thank you for coming, and thank you for your service to our country.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Call for executive session, 6.0, none. May I have a motion in a second to approve tonight's agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education? I don't know why I'm having trouble talking tonight. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. 8.0 resolutions tonight, there are none. 9.0 communications. An update on the board candidate filing. To date, three people have filed for three open positions. The filing goes on through next Tuesday, January 21st, at 5:00 p.m., and in order of filing, they are, please rise, Dee Snogerman, Deborah Hopper, Debbie here, okay, and Chris Jacob.
I am standing.
All right, thank you all. We look forward to that. And 9.02, calendar of meetings. The Board of Education Midyear Retreat is scheduled for Saturday, January 25th, 2014, at 8:00 a.m. at the Administration Building, and the next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, February 12th, 2014, at Central Middle School at 7:00 p.m. 9.03, Board Liaison Reports. We're busy.
We're busy.
You don't want to hear about Hawaii.
No, we don't want to hear about Hawaii.
Well, I missed the last meeting. I was at a conference in San Diego, and then come back, and it's winter break, and then we're snowed in, and I just feel like I haven't seen our board in months, but, so it's nice to be back. Today was a Project Parkway Steering Committee meeting, and very well attended. We got to share our New Year's resolutions, which was interesting, and Desi, you're following through. He wanted to be more positive this year, and I thought that was very interesting, because he's probably one of the most positive people that I know. We talked about the growth mindset, we talked about the early childhood study, which Kevin Beckner presented, and then Kevin also presented on the Missouri learning standards, and I think most of us have been able to see his presentation on that issue. If you haven't, you need to, because he does a great job. It was a very productive meeting, I thought, and everyone left knowing a little more than when they came in, so a successful meeting.
We might want to just announce Project Parkway Quarterly Meeting, since we could just tie it into there.
Go ahead.
And I'm taking a little bit of a shot. So, February 10th, we're at Central High School, right, for a project, this is our quarterly meetings now, the day was a steering committee, but this is the evening meetings, 7 to 9, and then March 31st. Those two meetings will both be devoted primarily to Facilities 2020 ongoing work, so just announce that, and we certainly would like to see a wonderful turnout, if you haven't, want to see people come back and others to attend, so.
Can I clarify something? My trip to San Diego was not school board-related, it was a conference for another volunteer position that I do, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Tom.
Anybody else?
Well, I just have to say that there's a lot of really, really skilled educators, but I was treated at the holiday party at the ISC of the musical talents of some of the administrators, and I was fully impressed.
Now, we know that if we ever take to the sickbed or something, we've got some able-bodied administrators who can stand in for us with the gavel and everything else.
They did a skit about the school board.
Yes, they portrayed a school board meeting.
Some of you were looking confused.
And somebody recorded it. I don't know if that's...
I was just going to ask, was it...
Yeah, somebody recorded it on their phone. I had the pleasure of coming to Parkway's Job Fair on January 4th, right before the snow hit, and Dr. Watson was generous enough to let me sit in on some of her administrator interviews, it was very interesting, and what I found most interesting was the eagerness of people to work in Parkway. Boy, that room was a buzz, and it was great to see, and I know that if we need to fill some positions, there are some people out there who are really anxious and eager to work for Parkway, so I think that's great news. Okay, we're, yes?
Just a quick comment, I was at a few of our schools, I didn't realize it was nine that had water main breaks of some kind, some of them pretty severe, and I just think it was wonderful the way people came together, our students at Shenandoah, that'll be over at Highcroft, and, you know, it just shows how good the school is and how good it is to come together and think, "How can we take care of kids?", but also, it kind of points out that this is a critical year to make sure we get that bond and we do it in a way, because that's money we have to spend, and we don't have any more bond money, so. But my hat's off to Maintenance Department and to all the schools that had to bear with that and did it really well.
Mr. Feldman, can I just, to tie onto that, I just want to just compliment in particular the work of a couple of principals working together, Carrie Luttrell at Shenandoah, Erin McPherson at Highcroft, welcoming those students. Actually, what was kind of a tough thing really turned out to be really a very positive working relationship between those schools and the communities, and I'm very, very pleased to see us live our mission, that we really helped really work through this, and people really stepped up, including, like you mentioned, the district people and building people as well. We also had some other, I don't want to leave anybody out, but we did have, I know Sorrento Jen Martin had to make some adjustments as well. So, we really have a lot of good things happening when the chips are down a little bit, so thanks, Chris, I think it was really nice of you to note that.
Before we go on, do we have any students in the audience that would like to stand up and tell us who they are and why they've come to see us tonight? I think that means you, young man. I think that means you, young man.
What troop are you with?
Well, we hope we give you something interesting to write about. We're going to leave that up to these teachers. Thanks. Anybody else? It's hard to see over the podium. Okay, great. We're going to go on now with reports. We're going to talk about Goal Four with Desi Kirchhafer and Liz Morrison. You're up. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped the good part. There is just something wrong tonight. Okay.
We'll help you.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's what your job is, right? Okay. May I have a motion in a second to approve the recommended motions for consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those consent items carry seven zero. Eleven point zero action items, none. Policy review, none. Now we're going to get to Desi and Liz.
Or Liz says hello to her family watching.
Everyone, remember, we're supposed to wait.
Hello. President Feldman, it's an honor to be in front of the board this evening once again to talk about professional learning communities in Goal Four and our strong professional learning communities. I am going to give a little background, just very briefly, and then introduce our panel. But before I do that, you asked Liz and I to come forward. And I want to just say that Liz Morrison has really been the driving force behind the development. She took what has organically come up from the teachers and their desire to collaborate in efforts for student achievement. And that's what, to achieve mission. And Liz pulled it all together and really has put together a comprehensive plan. I know, and you know, from the board retreat, I mean, the MSBA retreat, there are many other districts, I think, who are envious of the way we've been able to do it. It wasn't, it was one of these initiatives that grew and grew and grew. And it's hard to manage in a place as large as Parkway. But with Liz Morrison's leadership and her professional development team, and TLA working with the schools has been an incredible journey. But we couldn't have done it without Liz's leadership. So I'm going to give her an opportunity to talk. But I do want to make sure I thank Liz for all her help and support. So Liz.
So what my big information was to say that the work that we have done at the district level is minimal compared to the work that our teachers have done in the field. And we have about 200 teams of teachers, MSPLCs, multiple school-based teams, who do the hard work of moving this work forward. And I am just really excited that we were able to recruit our teachers to come tonight and tell you guys about the hard work that they are doing to make this successful for student achievement in our district. So thanks.
And Liz will continue to serve as a resource for questions this evening as well. But I know this board has been well-informed about professional learning communities from the onset and been involved and had great questions. You were participating in the calendar planning that allowed for this additional collaboration to take place, and you've heard many, many presentations. So that's sort of why we wanted to do a different format again, and really hear from the people who are implementing the work and actually leading the work. So what we have tonight is five of our teacher leaders with professional learning communities. And I think it's important that we really get to a ground level. Sometimes I know in our board presentations, you'll have questions, and I'm going, boy, I wish I had somebody here who was really doing the work here to answer that question. And I think that's the approach we wanted to take tonight. And also to hear about the work. But really, what we ask them to do is to talk about the successes of it, because we do have some really strong success stories. But we've also faced some challenges. And I think that they'll share with some of those challenges tonight, and they also have hopes for the future. And so that's part of what our panel is going to present, and then have an opportunity for any question, answer, and dialogue in between. So I want to introduce to my left here the panel here. From elementary, and we have each background and also a multi-school PLC representative and instructional coach. But from Ren Hallow Elementary, it's fifth grade, isn't it? Kristy Prudence from middle school, from Northeast Middle, ELA, seventh grade. Chrislyn Billingsley. And our high school, one of our high school representatives, Jennifer Bannaker from North High, ELA. And our multi-school PLC leader, Jennifer Forrest James from South High for Speech and Drama. And our instructional coach, representing Piermont, is Mandy Kelly. So at this point, I'm going to turn the microphone over to whoever would like to start. I don't know if you've established an order. But someone, Kristy looks excited and ready. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
All right. Hi, thanks for having us come. One of the greatest successes that I've had on my CLT that I've been a part of, I've been the leader for two years that we've really been implementing everything. We, as a team, there's three of us, have moved from fourth to fifth grade with our same class. So we've seen a lot of growth and been able to track that over time. At the beginning of last school year, we had looked at some of our map data and noticed that our students were really struggling in the area of math. So we decided for the entire year last year, we're really going to focus our efforts on that. We were able to look at some of that data and determine two areas where we really knew that they needed some help. And one of the areas was just basic math facts. And another one was the geometry vocabulary that they were getting tested on. So those two, there was a 73% success rate with their math facts originally, and then a 69% success rate with their geometry vocabulary. So the greatest success that we saw was that by the end of their fourth grade year, and looking at their map data now, they went from a 73 to an 84 with their math facts. And then their geometry vocabulary went from a 69% to an 85%. So that was huge, and we worked so hard on it all year long. So it was really exciting to see those gains. We tracked it over the year. The students were able to actually look at the goals that we had for them, set their own goals, and kind of track that themselves, which was also very motivating for them. And we were able to see little by little how they were getting better. So it was nice at the end to see that it all paid off. So that was a huge success for us. And then the biggest challenge in elementary school is that we have so many different subject areas to touch on and not being able to have enough time to focus our efforts on all of the things that we think are most important in all of the subject areas. So that's also one of the hopes that I have is that as this process gets more familiar to us, that we'll really be able to focus our efforts on more than just one subject level or subject at a time, and just feel more comfortable ourselves, but also the students with making our SMART goals and having more than one going at a time. Because right now, we're feeling really comfortable with having either a reading or a math goal, but we're hoping that over time, we can kind of expand that. That's all for me. Sure.
As you had the success with math, with the math facts and the geometry, and the students responded to that, do you see that, you know, one of the things we'd like to see is that they're learning how to learn. So does that translate over into other areas, or could you tell?
What do you mean by that?
I know we're pretty early in this. Well, I mean, if they somehow, you taught them processes or things that would help them to do better in math, now maybe it would help them in reading.
Oh, yes, absolutely. One of the biggest things, especially with math, is a lot of students just don't feel that confidence piece. And so by tracking their progress and noticing that at the very beginning of learning anything, it's going to be tough, it's going to be hard. But eventually, over time, little by little, the different strategies that we're giving them, they just are persevering a little bit more and gaining that confidence in all subject areas. So it's been very helpful.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chrislyn Billingsley. The biggest success that I've seen in the last few years that we have had PLCs at Northeast Middle was a few years ago, we got a cohort of students. When they came in sixth grade, we saw that they had a trend, just collectively, that they hadn't done well testing-wise. And so as they traveled through, when they got to seventh grade, and I was in seventh grade, we were able to pull apart the data. We worked with the data coach and really identified some areas that they were struggling in. So instead of the data just being one big ball, we were able to look at the different layers within it, where kids were struggling, and even groups of students that were struggling. And so we worked together in our PLC to come up with some interventions and even change the way we were teaching things, so that we can help these kids grow. By the end of that school year, well, when the data came out in August the next year, we celebrated because even though those kids, when we looked at that cohort of data as they had been traveling and they had this trend over them, they had been the lowest out of all other cohorts of their grade level. By the end of that year, after we did all of that work, they had made the most gains. They didn't get, you know, they weren't the highest, but they had made the most gains. And as we watched them, as they've moved through later grade levels, that has been their new trend, that they are making gains. And so that was really powerful, that has been powerful for me, to know that if we all work together, and if we look at all the pieces that are making up, that the data isn't just, here's the data on this group of kids, this is what it is. If we look at all the pieces that make it up, that we could make some change with those students, and they can start to believe that they can do things different, too. So that's been powerful for me with working with PLCs. A challenge, I would say, is, so I teach seven ELA, and there's six of us. A challenge for me is, and possibly this might hinge on a hope. If a student left my class and they went to another seventh-grade teacher's class across the district or in the same building, would they still be guaranteed what our PLC was guaranteeing to them? Now, ELA as a whole, we do have some district guarantees that we have worked really hard on selecting this year. So I feel hopeful that that would happen. But I would say, in my first example about that, we were looking at that cohort of students and all the pieces that made up what data we were seeing about them. When teachers adjust their instruction to meet the needs of students, will they still get what they need? And so I see that as a challenge. Like, how do we make sure that everybody gets what they need? A hope that I have, I really enjoy working with content area teachers on selecting goals for students and working to make these gains. But it has also been powerful for me to be able to work with teachers interdisciplinary, like even in my building and in other buildings, like teachers who teach facts or teachers, the library media specialists, that we have been able to do some powerful work together just by having some common interests about things. Our new thing right now is, we're trying to work on our Google certification. And so we've become like our own little PLC based off of that, that new learning that we've undertaken. And so I hope that the PLC process could transform into that, too, that it could be content-related and interest-based. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Bannaker, and I lead up the English III PLC at North High. We have seen a lot of gains in terms of critical thinking abilities in English over the past couple of years. The first couple of years of our PLC work has been spent in developing the assessments and really fine-tuning them and making them work for us in terms of figuring out what students need, and that's been really helpful. And the shared expectations that we have across our team, and really even the other English III teachers who aren't technically part of our CLT group, who share these expectations and the assessments that come with them, that has led to, I think, more, a higher level of preparedness that we see in our students when they switch at semester. And so I know that if I get a whole new crop of students, like I have this semester, that they're going to be prepared for what I expect of them, because I pretty much know what they did the previous semester. There really isn't anything that they're missing, which has been really nice. And we also added in some reflection this semester, or this past semester, with our assessments and the goals that we have for students. And I just personally, in my own experience, had some really great moments with students where I would show them their progress on these major skills that we were working on and where they were at the beginning of the semester, the middle, and the end of semester. And I had kids who came in, you know, pretty deficient in the skills that we were working on and, you know, would only write me two sentences in a response, who were writing, you know, almost a full page in 30 minutes and taking every bit of time that I was giving them. And they were celebrating their own successes, which I think was really powerful. A challenge that we've had in our implementation would really just be with planning interventions and then helping to push the students who are already excelling in the skills that we're working on. So the first couple of years, we spent a lot of time developing the assessments and fine-tuning the assessments, and it feels like that was a never-ending process for so long. And I feel like now we have, we have good assessments, we have strong goals. And so we're really just working to, you know, push ourselves to the next step and really design interventions outside of the individual classroom, sort of as a team. And that's part of what I have for my hopes, is that since I've seen that over the years, the process has been, it's sort of working itself out as we've been coming back to this and revisiting the assessments. I'm hoping that next year, now that our assessments are strong, that we can really move into this intervention and enrichment piece.
I'm probably not going to talk very long. And I hope you can understand me, I'm sorry. I am the cohort leader for theater. Ironically enough, and I have no voice tonight. So I'm speaking for the multiple learning communities. And I would say for us, the biggest, or the biggest success that we've had is the ability to talk to each other. Because in a lot of our buildings, we are the only specialist in our content area. And in the past, we would have a day here or there where we would talk to each other. But with multiple learning, we can do it throughout the year. So what we've decided to do is tackle those assessments. So we're a little bit farther behind than some of the other PLCs, simply because in the past, we never had the ability to have time to meet with each other. So that's probably our biggest success. We decided to take our theater arts course and really look at the assessments and the best practices that each building was doing, and then try and integrate them into all of the schools for our guaranteed theater curriculum. The other thing that we're working on in theater is making sure that our theater curriculum is relevant and supportive to the core subjects and letting students understand that the arts has, very definitely has a place in core and can be used in their other content areas. Stuff that they learn in our class, they can use in math, science, and English. I'd say our biggest challenge is also ironically enough, time. Now that we have it, we want more of it. And so especially for those of us that are traveling, it's difficult. You know, we'll start to talk about something, we'll really get into it, and then, oh, we got to go back to our building. We got to rush to get back to our building, so that we're there for our own students. So I would say that's probably our biggest challenge, as well as my biggest hope, is that we would have more time, which I know is so very difficult, but we would really love to use it effectively.
Hi, I'm Mandy Kelly. I'm the instructional coach at Piermont. And I'd like to speak from the perspective of someone who works in a building, just really be more of a facilitator for all of the CLTs that are run in our building. And what's nice is that I do have that perspective and get to have the privilege of working with all of those different teams. And on that note, I think the biggest success is the collaboration and the trust that is built within those teams and the ownership that teams are taking of the students. In the past, meetings were typically run by administrators or by coaches of some sort, and the teachers were kind of just like, okay, what are we going to do today? But instead, teachers now are driving the agenda for the CLT meetings, and they are really taking ownership of it and coming together to collaborate. They're the ones that are creating their assessments. They're scoring their assessments together, they're writing their goals together. And because of that, they have come to this ownership of not just their team goals and wanting to reach those, but they've also come to a better ownership of the students. And they often now refer to them as our students instead of my students, which is kind of a nice thing to see. As far as the biggest challenge that I've seen, it kind of goes back to what you've said, as far as time. Now that we have it, we want more of it. And I think what our teachers want more time for, and what they would like for administrators to kind of support them with more time for, is the actual learning of the CLT. That's the L in the CLT, is the learning. And right now, I think our teachers are so pressed for time, and we feel so much pressure to reach our goals, that we set our goals, and then we immediately jump to planning instructional lessons to reach those goals without actually taking some of the time to do some learning about best practices and what would be the best way to reach those goals. And we end up doing that in the process, in the long run. And sometimes it takes us longer to reach our goals, because we don't do it upfront. Yeah, we skip the step. Exactly, we skip the step. So I think that that would be something that I would hope for in the future is that administrators would be more willing to support teachers in that time for the learning. And that, we know, as we know, has to take place... And that, we know, as we know, has to take place above and beyond the normal school day. So if we could kind of try to maybe find a way to be creative about providing time for teachers to do the learning, I think that would be my hope for the future.
I guess for Mandy first, and how long have you been an instructional coach?
This is my seventh year.
Okay, so.
Well, five years as a literacy coach and two years.
Right, I understand. How much different does your job feel under PLCs as opposed to before that?
It's very different. Like I said, when I, before we started PLCs, it was very much of, the coaches took responsibility. And, you know, we've talked to the teachers, of course, and say, what are your needs? And what do you want to work on? But we really did more of the background work of planning agendas and kind of helping them to look at their data and set their goals. But now that teachers are taking that ownership piece, it's very different because they are the ones that are planning their agendas and deciding where do we want to put our time and energy. And they're really using coaches more of a resource, which is a great thing for us because now they're coming to us and saying, this is what we're doing, can you help us with this? Instead of the other way around.
So you're no longer pushing, you're being pulled.
I am being pulled, much more. And that is, that's a challenge as a coach, because you have multiple CLTs in your building and you only have a two-hour late start day and everybody wants you, so. That's okay, we're working it out.
Understand, thank you. And then for Kristi, and I think I understood that, and I'm looking back at my notes from two years ago, when I was up at Southwest Middle, when they were rolling out the PLCs. And they had those, maybe you had similar document, the five questions. And I thought the more interesting one, the obvious one, how do we respond if students don't understand? And maybe the less obvious one, particularly for non-educators, how will we respond when students do understand? And I think I heard a consistent theme that that's kind of a more open-ended question at this point across the, can you speak to that from the elementary perspective?
Sure, that, it can be a bit of a challenge when they are understanding what's going on. But a lot of our work is giving them the pre-assessment upfront so that we can kind of see how to differentiate our needs. We tend to, once we come up with a SMART goal, we use a 30-minute block of time at our school that we call our run workshop time, that we kind of separate into different groupings where we'll have some students that are getting that acceleration while some are just getting more of a remediation. And by knowing that upfront and knowing where they are, it's a lot easier to figure out exactly what their needs are so we can best meet them.
Okay, thanks. And Kristin, kind of the same question for you. You really focused in on the successes you had with those that weren't understanding. But for those that get it going in, what's that universe look like?
What do we do when students do understand? I would say a go-to place for us is, we try to, there's four levels of rigor that a teacher can implement when you have a kid doing activity. So I'll just give an example. Right now, my students are working on argument research presentations. Well, I have eight students in one class and they know how to research, they know how to give a presentation. So they're preparing a debate about the Patriot Act, self-selected topic. They are going places with it that I had never even imagined. And other students are working on. Yes. So they have a level of depth to their presentation, they're giving a debate, but I'm still going after the same learning target that I am for all the other students. But they're taking it someplace and even, there weren't enough resources for them. So I logged into my university account to see what we could find there. So I don't know, it's going to be pretty entertaining for me to watch them, the way they are so engaged in their learning. And they don't need me, per se, they don't need me. And then I, you know, tap into me with the other students and they need different things. Maybe in a group, they know how to speak, but they're stuck on the research process. And so I can go after some of those things that they need. And so I know that that is similar to what's happening all around the building and everywhere. You just kind of figure out where kids are, where's an entry point for what they need? How do we get them into whatever it is that you're asking them to do?
Well, I was going to ask you the follow-up question of, so does the OCG help you get there? But it sounds like we may be pushing the envelope on the OCG in every direction.
I do consult the, I was going to say the ACT. The OCG. The OCG as a guide. And it certainly is a good jump-off point for me. But I had not initially planned to teach kids how to debate. And so I had to take some time to meet with the gifted teacher about, because I know that in eighth grade, the kids were, you know, spending this time debating. And I knew that was a part of their curriculum. So I went and met with her and said, I have eight kids and some of them are already gifted, some are not. And they want to do this and I don't, I'm scared. I don't want to say no, but I know that if I just say, prepare an argument presentation, which is the basics, that's not enough for them. So I have to be open to where it is that they want to go. They're still fulfilling the criteria for the course, but they're taking it someplace else.
Super, thank you very much. And Madam President, I guess I'll yield the floor since I've monopolized the time.
Good questions. Good questions, though. Who wants to go next?
So I know at first, some people were kind of uncomfortable going to PLCs and working together. Do you see any of that, any of you, or is pretty much everybody on board? Is there resistance at all?
I can start and speak for my group. I think maybe my group is an anomaly because we didn't really have any resistance at all. And I think a lot of that is, we really like each other. And we all seem to, you know, agree on the basic, you know, goals that we have set. So I haven't seen any resistance in my group, honestly.
Well, in my group, all four of us are best friends outside of Parkway, which can be a bad thing, actually, as far as something like this is concerned. But no, I mean, yes, I was afraid of the same thing because also all four of us are very, I don't know if you know the four theater teachers, but we all have very distinctive, strong personalities and strong opinions, which we are not afraid to voice. But we, it's true, but actually, no, we didn't have any.
I will say that there were definitely some teams that were slower to come around than others. But I think that once teachers see the results of what can happen when we work together for the students and how much the students actually improve, then they're sold on it after that.
That's really good to hear, that's really exciting.
Sam?
Do you meet as an interdisciplinary team? Do you meet in your team or by discipline?
Right now, we meet by discipline, by content area. But as I said, I know there are groups, like we have our own groups, people you've worked with before, people you've teamed with before, that we kind of have our own PLC that goes, I mean, not on late start day, but just, it's impromptu, like I said, we're learning about, we're trying to get Google certified, like a couple of us. And so we're always like, oh, I tried this, what did you do with this? Or I got stuck on this, what'd you do with this? And it's me, the library media specialist and a math teacher and our technology specialist in our building. And we just go back and forth talking about what we found, or I did this and this didn't work for me, or I did this. And it just happens organically, I would say. We don't have a scheduled time that that happens. And it's like that with different groups of people over a variety of things. Like, I love assessment, if you get to talking to me, I will get into some things about assessment. But it could be about that, it could be about even monitoring student behaviors. Like, some things just naturally happen. And so that's why I said I hope, I like, of course, it is necessary that we work within our discipline. But there is something to being able to hear what else is going on across content. And even, I would say, on my team, you know, we have social studies in ELA working together. And we've been able to do some more powerful work than we've done in the past with students because they know that we have similar expectations. And when the social studies teacher is talking about primary sources, that I'm saying the same thing, too, in ELA. So we're starting to have some common vocabulary, so I have a hope for that.
Now, you also have team planning time, don't you? So does some of this take place in team planning time? Could that be possible, that teachers are working together on behalf of the team of students that they have?
I would say during teaming typically, well, I would say, I'll speak about my team. And this could be a generality. There's not a whole lot of, the PLC work that you would see in content areas, it's more about responding to student needs. So if kids aren't doing as well as they could be doing in different classes or they have a social, emotional issue, we bring in other members of the students' team, like the counselor or the admin comes in. It's more about responding to what students need, how are we going to get them to stay successful? Because in middle school, they have seven teachers? Well, there's eight periods, they have ELA two periods, seven teachers. So that's a lie, it's a lie. So it's more about that, I would say, it has been, in my experience.
Yeah, with the elementary, it's mainly, PLCs are mainly by grade level? And then bringing other specialists in from time to time, I assume?
We meet every, every team in our building meets once a week during one of our plan times. Ours just happens to be on Tuesdays, so every Tuesday we meet. And it might be a continuation of something that we've done from the late start day or it could be something else. But it's always focused on some sort of SMART goal or where our students are and where we want to take them versus our Thursday and Friday where we're just like planning what we're going to do for the following week. We meet a lot, so.
PLC meetings on the late start dates.
Yes, usually that's our nice chunk of time. You know, it's a two-hour block of time where we really can dive into something. And then the 45 minutes or so that we have weekly, we are able to kind of pick up where we left off.
Now, is that characteristic in other teams, too, or just yours?
Our school, everyone meets once a week. Yes, but I don't know about throughout the district.
Thank you.
Just a brief story, about 10 years ago, when my oldest child was in second grade, for some reason, he had mastered whatever the math concept was that they were working on at the time and he was bored. And it's funny to think about him today, thinking that he was asking for harder work. But indeed, he was asking for harder work. And I remember asking his second-grade teacher, well, he's mastered this and he's kind of bored. Can you take him to the next level? Can you take him to whatever it was, multiplication or whatever? And she goes, oh, they teach that in third grade. So nowadays, if, you know, if he could have been a second-grade student in the days of PLCs, I can see where this teacher would have had a lot of different options for him and any other student to take them further in their learning instead of having them sit in the classroom and be bored. So based on my personal experience, I can tell you how much I appreciate what this work means for kids and their success, I just think it's amazing. It's really meeting the needs of all students, so I congratulate you all on that. And I had a question about the workload that's associated with PLCs. Can you all talk about how much more of your time the PLCs take? And I'm assuming that the time you put in is paying off in other areas. So have you found balance in it? And you can kind of just go down the line if you like.
Sure, absolutely. It does require more time, but like you said, we're seeing so much, so many gains from it that it doesn't really seem like extra work, in a way. Being the CLT leader, I find myself, the only extra work I'm doing outside of a normal school day would possibly be like creating the agenda, coming up with ideas for what we could be looking at next and maybe pre-analyzing data to come up with an idea that maybe our group might want to focus on. It's kind of distributed amongst, but my personality, I tend to take things over. But no, I'll delineate out every once in a while. So it's not, I don't see it as a big deal because I know that it's working so well.
Overall, I would say I don't see the PLC work as additional work. What I'm finding in my PLC and even in the department, some people naturally have some abilities that we, that others don't have. I don't always do well with selecting the proper text, but I can come up with it. I'll find a new strategy. If you need some record-keeping done or something like that, I'm good at that. So different people, different members of the team do different things well. So it kind of divides up the work in a natural way. Like when we start something new, a couple of us are pretty good at coming, putting, you know, the overview, what's the background info about it, so we know what we're getting ourselves into. And like I said, like there's people who know how to go out and find the right story or the right, whatever it would be. Like different ones of us are really good at that. Different ones of people are, like, we have one teacher, he does an excellent job of like keeping track of our rubrics because we say our rubrics are alive. Just because we made one does not mean that that's where, that's it. It's revisable. And he does a wonderful job keeping track of that for us and kind of noticing, like when we're talking, like listening for. I noticed when we were looking at summaries that students were starting to do this. Do we need to put X here? Or like, these different little things that we all are good at, we're always listening for it. That's like our own little hat that we put on in the group. So we share the work.
And I have to probably echo a lot of the things that have already been said. But I know that last year, when we had the addition of plan time, common plan time in my building for our CLT work, and I passed on to my group that we were, you know, we needed to meet once a week, at least for an hour. At first, we, I had some responses that, you know, lamented the loss of plan time. But I think as we got into the work and saw the gains that we were making, it really became not a loss of plan time, but more of a logical use of plan time and a really valuable use of it. And so, I mean, I might have to spend a little extra time crafting an agenda, but, you know, meeting once a week with my CLT and having those late arrival meetings has really been very beneficial and not really, it doesn't really feel like a lot of additional time. It just feels like spending my time the way I should be spending my time.
Yeah, I'd say other than creating the agenda, everybody in our group kind of shares the work equally. Actually, the only real additional time that it's caused for me personally is I'm constantly revising my own curriculum, even in areas that the PLC is not doing. So in the past, where I thought I had a really strong handle on a unit, now I might look at it and go, oh, wait, no, that's not very good, have to rewrite it. So in a lot of ways, I feel like I'm still a new teacher, even though I've been teaching for 16 years now. I'm constantly revising it and the PLC is kind of, I don't want to say forced, but caused me to look at my own curriculum in areas that the PLC hasn't visited yet. And so in that sense, yes, it's taking more time, but the trade-off is so immense that that doesn't bother me at all.
And I would just echo what they've said as far as initially, yes, there was some pushback as far as taking another plan time away from the teams of teachers. But like I said, once they see the benefits that it has with the students and the growth and also the personal reflection on how they are doing as a teacher, you know, it's one thing when you come to a team to say, okay, you know, but there are students and we're all responsible for that. And so teachers feel, I think they feel a sense of responsibility to kind of step up to the plate. And so because of that, they are using that time wisely. Like Jennifer said, it's more a better use of time. And they're not really feeling the loss of that plan time and the payoff is definitely there.
Because we do hear some, from time to time, although I haven't heard it in a while, about initiative fatigue. So that was really the reason for my question is, you know, we come up with these great things and we throw it at the teachers and, you know, a lot of times I hear, oh, gosh, one more thing, one more thing. But I think from what I'm hearing, that this one more thing is really a good one.
Maybe this is for Liz, I don't know. Well, first of all, were you nice to your husband today? Okay, good. Well, we revealed our.
Oh, our year-year's resolutions.
Year-year's resolutions this morning, so I just had to check on her. We have 200 PLC groups.
Yes.
Each one of them has a PLC leader.
Yes.
Can they benefit from each other, the leaders?
We have the, oh, this up here, sorry. We have the, oh, this up here, sorry.
Since two, I was thinking about this as I was sitting, um, over there trying to, it seems like we've been doing this for a long time and listening to these guys talk, it made me, um, amazing, I mean, really amazing. And, uh, it's been two years and that, that to me is amazing. Um, however, every summer, we started three years ago with the Professional Learning Community Institute, which is how we bring all of our leaders together to get that work done so they have that time to talk to each other. At our elementary schools and our middle schools, the instructional coaches lead development for the PLC leaders. And at the high schools, they do those a little bit differently, but those are led usually by like an administrator and maybe the PMC is involved with that. So, they bring their leaders together at the building level and then we bring everyone together, um, in the summer for two days of learning, um, as a leadership team.
Is there anything going on? Is that a way they could communicate or?
Well, that's a great question. I actually, I actually put up that on our website. I have it there. No one's joined in.
Okay. They don't have time.
Exactly, exactly. Um, so, so we had it up on our website, um, it just hasn't really taken off that much. Um, we're thinking at the institute this summer, um, Bill is gonna help me with this. We're gonna be, um, making sure that we have like a Twitter account or something that we can do, so even there, we can really start learning from each other and try to figure out how we can have that run and be fed. So, we're, we're hoping to build that kind of online collaborative as well.
It's just so exciting to think where we were, I, I say this a lot, ten years ago when I joined the board and, and Mr. Major, you know that too, um, and to, to hear everyone's on board and, and that this is working and it's where we had hoped it would go. So, it's, it's just very, very exciting. And thank you, all of you, um, for what you do. It's just, it's so exciting and so good for the kids.
What's kinda next and, you know, this is, we're, we really wanna continue developing PLCs. We, we know we've come a long ways, but still further to go. So, what, what's kind of on the docket to, to take us to the next level over next year or two or a couple of years?
Well, um, so ironically, I was working on that today. Um, we made a five-year plan five years ago for this work and we're in year four of implementation of that plan. So, this summer, or we're gonna tell them these guys right now, um, and this, this summer, um, our work is focusing on question number five of PLCs, what are best practices? And next Wednesday, the principals are gonna be taking a look at that and determining, you know, what do they see, what do they think they need. These guys know I send out surveys a lot, asking them, "What do you guys want us to do for you? What should we be doing?" Um, our keynote speaker is, uh, Dr. Anthony Mohammed and we're, our book, our definitive text is The Will to Lead, The Skill to Teach. And, um, we're hoping for this year, we move into that question number five. We always go back and repeat those stuff we had before in case we have any new leaders, um, in case people want more information on assessment or RTI. And we heard that differentiation piece is really critical and it's so hard to figure out how to do that. Um, and then continue with our development of the PLC leaders through the next couple of years. And so, that's our plan. Did that answer?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Any other?
I think we all, um, we're concerned about is doing this right and being true to PLCs. And, uh, Rick DeFor, who's really helped us, at least, you know, from a direct standpoint, but, but philosophically, uh, you know, is really concerned that so many districts start this and then get, they really kinda do half-hearted. He calls it PLC light. And, and I guess from your assessment, I think, you know, we've really, uh, to the point I guess some people made, I think we've really, uh, in, in a large district like ours, been able to really, I think, been able to do it well and avoid kinda the half-hearted effort. Would you, would you agree?
Yes, I think that it's still, like, we still have challenges. And I have to tell you guys, when I invited our panel, I was like, "Ooh, who do I think will come?" And so, so I'm sitting here listening to their stories and I didn't know what we were going to get and I wanted, didn't want you to think that I, well, I went out there and I picked the, you know, everyone's gonna have success stories and this is awesome. These are just like people, I'm like, "I know they'll come. They're great women. They will come and talk to you guys." And I just didn't know where we would go. So, to listen to their stories is great. We have challenges. Everyone is in a different place. And I was listening to Jennifer talk about the MSPLCs and I know they feel like they're behind, but they are right where they're supposed to be. Because with PLCs, you move at the pace of your team. Um, Chris Shirley from Oakbrook called me today, um, his teams, they're gonna look at where they are because they're asking the question of themselves right now. Are we doing this right? Are we PLC light? And we need to take a step back and take a look at that. And I just think that that shows that our commitment from all levels is so huge, but we have, every team is at a different level. I've been called into different places to work with teams, um, to figure out where they are. I know Bruce had mentioned the OCG and how does that work? Well, with our, um, I think we mentioned this earlier on, we couldn't have done this without that because we didn't have the question answered, what we want students to know. I mean, question number one. So, with OCG stage one completed, we were actually ready to move into our collaborative teams. Without that piece, we're like, "We don't know what we want them to know." So, you can't really have a collaborative team if you don't have that information. And then the teachers take it from there and just really may, bring it to life, so.
Well, your five remarkable educators, thank you so much for what you're doing in PLCs and if you're any indication of what it is in Parkway, I'm pretty happy.
I think it's awesome that we, uh, we heard that they're using the word "our students", not just "my students" anymore, and I think that's a huge goal. I mean, that's fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions before we kind of wrap things up? All right. Um, I think where we are as a, as a district is exciting and you can see, like Liz said, we, we didn't have a script for anybody. We, we posed just a few questions and they were on their own, so I really appreciate your honesty and your reflections and your thoughtfulness here tonight. Um, but I think you could see, our goal was for strong professional communities. And while everybody can acknowledge is that there are challenges ahead, um, but I think the, the excitement and I will, uh, kinda touch on a little bit of that growth mindset concept, that looking at those challenges as opportunities to grow and learn and grow stronger as an organization is, is our overall goal. Uh, but I don't think the spirit of collaboration could be any stronger than it is right now. So, I really appreciate these five folks coming here tonight and your time listening to us. So, thank you very much and thank you all.
I have one more quick comment. Without the leadership we have in this school district, we could not have done this. I mean, our Board of Education, under the auspice of our, um, Superintendent, our Assistant Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, you helped us change our schedule to make this happen with the late start days. And without that kind of leadership, this could not happen. So, it's really exciting to work in it and live in a school district where leadership is at every level and, um, just thank you, thank you, thank you. And thanks, you guys. And thanks, Desi, for leading it all.
Break for a minute? And, um, let, I, I'm sure your teachers have other, other places to go and things to do and papers to grade and plans, lessons, plan, lessons to plan. So, thank you all for coming and we really appreciate hearing from you.
That guy with the right ear on the suit.
Did he leave this?
Uh, he's gonna come back next time.
It looks like we're ready to get started again. We are gonna move on to program evaluation extended learning. Call on Dr. Lisa Meredith. Come on up.
Good evening, President Feldman, Vice President Mogerman, members of the board, Dr. Marty and Mrs. Stover. It is my pleasure to join you this evening to share highlights related to the program evaluation of extended learning. So extended learning can be defined as the primary acquisition of knowledge and skills through instruction or study outside of the traditional classroom methodology. This definition certainly challenges us to expand learning opportunities beyond the traditional structure of the school day and the school year. In addition, it challenges us to consider different methodologies of learning. As we consider different approaches and opportunities for learning, we must consider the balance between time and learning. Over the past several years, we have challenged ourselves to consider how do our current structures and systems allow us or prevent us from staying focused on learning as the constant as opposed to time? Extended learning is one avenue that remain, extended learning is one avenue that will help us keep learning as the constant as it allows us to plan beyond the typical number of school days within a school year and beyond the typical hours. So last school year during Project Parkway, there was an advisory that focused on extended learning. As this advisory worked, they looked at definitions and different opportunities for extended learning. And they came up with this list of opportunities, and it is a sample list that you saw at an earlier presentation last year. The idea, the ideas and suggestions on this list are starting to come to fruition in Parkway through multiple work teams that are working together. So let's review a couple of those. The experiential learning steering committee, which will begin its work in the coming weeks. You heard about this at the December 2nd Board of Education meeting. This group will help us develop a plan and a continuum for experiential learning, which will include things such as apprentice shifts and internships. Our innovation team is working with a group of people to look at virtual learning. They are in the process of developing plans to begin implementing online courses, hopefully in the fall of 2015-16. Our goal is to work with teachers and administrators over the coming months and propose courses during the course proposal next year so that we can have online course selections for students in 15-16. We joined in partnership with Rockwood, and so the Rockwood Parkway Community Schools Partnership is helping us look at a system to address individualized tutoring and instruction for students. In October and November at the board meetings, you heard about the efforts to ensure that service learning is embedded in multiple avenues and multiple ways for our students to experience learning outside of the classroom. We have many partnerships with organizations such as Stages and with UMSL, with the Stars Academy, where our students are having opportunities to develop studies around their personal interests, to perform in different avenues and different platforms, and pursue personal interests. And we're gonna continue to explore partnerships to expand those opportunities. So that leaves summer school. This evening, as we focus on extended learning, we are going to take a deeper look at one area, and that is summer school. So we are going to highlight some of the strengths of our current summer school program and have a few recommendations of things for us to consider. So the continued success of Parkway Summer School is due to a collaborative effort of many talented Parkway educators. However, it is the leadership and coordination provided by Mike Cosgrove that has allowed us to continue offering an excellent program. During this program evaluation, Mike was of great assistance in developing the surveys, leading the groups of teachers and administrators in the analysis. This group of educators analyzed the survey results and evaluated the course offerings and the course guide from last summer. His ongoing work throughout all months of the school year to plan the details and ensure that all needs are met is just incredible, and we are so thankful for his leadership. In addition, I would like to thank Dr. Nathan Tyson for his leadership and collaboration with the survey development and data analysis. Once again, his lens is invaluable in our work, and we appreciate it, Nathan. Now, onto the top strengths. Let's begin by celebrating the comprehensive nature of the Parkway Summer School program. In many neighboring districts, their programs have dwindled. We have been able to maintain. This past summer, we offered 498 courses that were taught by 312 staff members or administrators who worked in the program, and we served over six, we served 6,200 students. This is worthy of a large celebration that we were able to maintain that type of program. So as we look at the strengths of the program, the largest strength that I see is the intentional use of a continuous improvement process. This program evaluation was very challenging for me to do because this program has changed significantly each year. It hasn't stayed the same, and that is because of the structure that Mike develops to reflect with the administrators and teachers each summer. Not only the teachers and administrators, look at the list on the slide. He works with transportation, he works with safety and security, he works with special school district, with food services, with technology. At the end of every summer school, he reflects and collaborates with all parts of the organization to ensure that the next year is even better. As a result of the continuous improvement process, enhancements have occurred, and they have had positive impacts on the effectiveness and the efficiency of summer school. So over the past couple of years, Mike worked with administrators and teachers to revise existing courses and to add new courses to increase the level of rigor in our summer school offerings, as well as to align our course offerings to our mission and vision. Some course additions have been a result of professional learning that teachers have received over the past couple of years with science and residents. Examples of some course changes that have occurred is reading and math and more at the elementary level, which is a maintenance and intervention course, has changed multiple times as we've learned how to respond better to the needs of students in the summer. The current program has the teacher, the school teacher from the school year sending the goals for the student to work on to the summer school's teacher to help minimize the loss of time. Summer school's a short time, and if the summer school teachers have to do all the assessments to get to know the students, that could be a good part of summer school. So a way to share information back and forth. How do we ensure that it's not just intervention? We've looked at ways to add courses within those interventions or activities, brain breaks within the interventions to make them more engaging for the students. A literacy institute has been added at the middle level to encourage and increase the amount of reading during the summer to minimize the summer gap. In addition, at the middle school level, there's been the addition of the EMIT, Engineering, Innovation, Technology Equals Fun, and that course is, my understanding, is now at all of our middle schools in the summer. The course proposal process and teacher application process are both now electronic. And in addition, there have been significant improvements to the communication process around summer school, including internal communication as well as external communication with the design of a summer school website that Mike collaborated with our technology department in designing. As I shared, one of the strengths of our summer school, probably the most significant, is our rich course offerings in the comprehensive program. I shared that 498 courses were offered. These courses included enrichment courses, opportunities for intervention and maintenance, and camp offerings. So our survey asked the multiple stakeholders questions related to mission. According to the survey, 87% of teachers reported course offerings were designed to foster curiosity, while more than 60% of students, families, and administrators indicated that our courses fostered curiosity. Over 85% of teachers and administrators agreed that our course offerings helped students become more capable and provided opportunities for students to transfer their learning to new situations. However, that number was slightly lower with students and families, with 60% agreeing or strongly agreeing. High school students who participated in summer school consistently demonstrate a significant increase in their GPA. And in addition, students who participate in the Maryville College preparatory courses often show an increase in ACT scores, so we do have evidence that summer school helps increase capability. 90% of teachers claim that summer school increases students' confidence. More than 60% of administrator students and families also reported that they saw an increase in student confidence. 85% of teachers report that summer school courses offer learning experiences that challenge students to solve real-world, relevant, challenging problems, while more than 60% of administrator students and families agree. As part of the summer school program, students, along with family guidance, select courses that are of personal interest. Over 75% of teachers, administrators, and middle school students reported that summer school was interesting and engaging. So based on the program evaluation survey, the majority of respondents agreed that our summer school program is aligned and supports achieving our district mission. A second strength of our summer school program is the success in helping achieve Goal Six of our mission or of our strategic plan. So last year, summer school administrators were challenged to reduce summer school expenditures. This was achieved through a collaborative review and decision-making. In summer of 2012, Parkway invested a little over $505,000 in summer school. So as the summer school administrators collaborated, they made plans and projections that last summer they would be able to save a little over $207,000 in summer school expenditures. Last summer, as a district, we invested 300, a little over $311,000 in summer school, which was a savings of $194,000. In the board report that you received, there were more details about why we have seen changes in the revenue with summer school, and we can answer questions related to that if you want us to, Mike. Mike knows those details very well. I can address them to some extent, but not near as deeply as Mike. But this was a great collaboration and really pushed us to think beyond how we always did business. So how could we do business differently but still achieve the same outcome? And we are very, very thankful to all of the leaders in Parkway who put their heads together to do this problem solving. The reduction strategies that were used last year to help achieve that savings included looking at the number of locations for elementary sites, looking at the length, we reduced the length of the elementary and middle school program. We adjusted our staffing ratios for teaching and for our TAs, and we also made an adjustment to our administrators. We did not pay administrative interns to do summer school last summer. Instead, it was prince, assistant principals who were already on a 12-month contract, so it became part of their summer responsibilities. Centralized registration helped us reduce some of our support staff costs for summer school, and Will continues to work with Mike every year to look at transportation efficiencies, and every year they seem to find ways to cut more. So many, many strategies that came together. As part of the program evaluation, we asked various stakeholders to rank the effectiveness of summer school. Results indicate that the majority cases, in the majority of cases, stakeholders indicated that they would rank Parkway School as excellent, as excellent or good. So we look at teacher satisfaction being at 90.6%, administrator satisfaction 84.6%, family satisfaction 87.5%, and student satisfaction, our middle school students were at 78.8% and our high school students were at 61.5%. So you can see that this indicates a pretty strong customer satisfaction. However, it also indicated to us that we have room to improve. We have room, we have areas where we can make some improvements. So looking forward at Parkway Summer School, number one recommendation. So looking forward at Parkway Summer School, number one recommendation is for the leadership, hopefully Mike, for several years, to continue to use the intentional continued reflection and improvement process. It has helped continue to grow and improve our programs, and we need to continue that. However, as we look at that continued process, it will be very important for our administrative staff to continue to evaluate and balance the need for comprehensive summer school with the cost, and for us to continue to offer and meet our goals with the existing budget that we have for summer school. The second recommendation, I forgot to click, the second recommendation is to continue to implement mission-aligned learning opportunities. We have come a long way, but we, in looking at the course guide, there are still some places where we can make more improvements. Survey results indicated satisfaction of course offerings, but there was a discrepancy between some levels. Course offerings do need to ensure that we continue to focus on capable, curious, and confident learners. In addition, we need to ensure that all course offerings provide our students in the summer opportunities to understand and respond and to experience real-world learning experiences. One recommendation that was made by the committee to increase alignment and rigor through the offering was to offer some, some district-wide courses that would be the same at elementary, at all elementary and middle school locations. These courses would be collaboratively designed with TLA and the teachers who teach the summer school courses. The learning outcomes would be agreed upon. However, the teachers would continue to have flexibility to design those courses based on the students who are in theirs, but they would have resources and sample lessons. We're looking at taking some of the existing courses that are already at some of our sites and expanding them using that teacher expertise. So some examples for that would be ensuring that we have a robotics course at every elementary location, looking at how do we build service learning in and ensure that all kids, regardless of where they go to summer school, have an opportunity to do additional service learning in the summer. How do we ensure that there are courses around creativity at every location? STEM, looking at real-world opportunities, and how do we incur, increase virtual learning opportunities at the summer school level? In addition, the review team suggested that the high school summer school teams review the course offerings at each site and determine if there are ways to offer more opportunities for high school students to explore personal interests through summer school offerings. High school is a little more challenging because they are credit-bearing courses. So how do we offer credit-bearing courses in the summer but also allow students an opportunity to explore their personal interest? The review team recommended striking a balance of courses that are focused on personal interest, required courses, intervention, credit recovery, and to expand the opportunity through virtual learning and learning experiences outside of the school walls during summer school. In addition, in looking at balance, we are exploring the opportunity of expanding the structure of courses offered. There is conversation of offering academic camps in the afternoon of summer school weeks for elementary and middle school students. The TLA team is collaborating with Mr. Cosgrove in the camp design. We are currently exploring the topics of offering a coding camp, a maker space camp, and possibly a camp invention. We want to start slow this summer so that we can kind of test the market and work out some kinks, but we do think that that is a place where we could offer, expand our offerings for extended learning. It is also believed that summer school is a natural place to increase opportunities for students to foster their natural curiosity. It was suggested to provide professional learning opportunities for summer school teachers on developing learning environments and learning experiences that allow for personal areas of study. Summer school is a perfect time for teachers to try new things and take some risks in the way they design learning experiences, and so how can we embed professional learning within the summer school environment? Summer school, we have seen, offers a good environment for job-invited professional learning. We have seen this through the Science and Residence Grant, the Math and Residence Grant, and the Fine Arts Academy that we had a couple of summers ago. We will continue to seek opportunities and see how to connect them to summer school. Currently, Denise Papillo and our elementary team are working on Math and Residence II, which is a new grant that we received that will allow us to continue to do some of that work. In addition, it was recommended that as we continue to reflect on summer school, that we look at our partnership with Rockwood and community schools and are there ways to increase our offerings for students through our partnership. So in summary, you can see that extended learning is very complicated. Summer school is one piece of that. We have to ensure that we are connecting experiential learning, virtual learning, academic camps, community partnerships, all with our traditional summer school approach to create a connected web of extended learning opportunities for our students. At this time, Mike and I will open it for questions and conversation.
Thank you, and I can echo Lisa's comments about Mike Cosgrove and just the fantastic job that you do. Every year, I'm so impressed with how much you manage to get done for how many kids, and this year with almost $200,000 budget savings, it's absolutely incredible. So thank you so much, we appreciate what you do. Anybody else? I had a question when I, when I noticed that you had food service up there, and I didn't realize that we serve breakfast?
That's, that's as much as anything, a site-based decision.
Uh huh, okay.
In some schools, we offer full breakfast. In other schools, particularly the high schools and the middle schools, you'll see some clubs in offering breakfast options. For schools that don't have full breakfast support, then administrators frequently will purchase breakfast items to have on hand for students who have a need who come to, come to school.
Come hungry, yeah.
So it varies from school to school.
Okay, so are we employing?
Food service personnel?
Food service workers?
No, no.
Okay.
No, we, the schools typically will have a teacher assistant help to assist with that breakfast if, if they decide to have it.
And then, on the transportation, what is it that Will does to economize?
Um, I, I think as much as anything, we start out with a minimum number of buses, and then we have buses on standby that we add where we see that they're needed, if there, we find there are more students riding buses. The difference in transportation costs last year were, I think, essentially $8,000 from 2012, and I, I think that as much as anything was the fact that we reduced a site in the south area, probably made it more efficient that way. But it's, it's a constant conversation that I have with transportation as to what, how can we transport the students efficiently and minimize the number of buses that we're using.
Okay. One other question, I don't know which one of you wants to answer this, but, so we've seen ACT growth in our students that go to Maryville in the summer. So how do we reverse the process and get that kind of growth out of the rest of our students that don't have the opportunity to go to Maryville? So what are they learning in, that specifically helps their ACT scores? I mean, I know they're learning all sorts of different things there, but what can we do to bring some of that, what we've learned about helping kids succeed from summer school that we can bring back to, to the bigger school?
That's a great question, and a question I was anticipating was, what can we do to grow Maryville even further? And I've been having conversations with the two terrific coordinators who we have. They've scheduled a number of stakeholder meetings. One of them is going to be next month with all high school counselors to share with them the highlights of Maryville.
Can you tell us again how many students you've had? Like what your progression has been?
This past year was approximately 240 students, up from about 200 students the year prior, in 2012, and 100 students, so 100 to 200 to 240. I think my personal goal this year would be to get to at least 300. So we have a number of strategies, and so just to answer your question specifically, I think when we go to our meeting with the counselors next month, we could possibly highlight some of the strategies that we've used that reflected an increase in the ACT scores. Now, I know Dr. Tyson is sitting behind me, and he would say that I need to be sure to qualify that statement that, you know, a, one group of students demonstrated some growth in their, in their ACT scores, but the other group, even though there was some growth, it was not significant.
So we can draw a correlation, but not a causation between the participation in Maryville. I do think, though, in thinking about this, so I appreciate you asking the question, maybe in that collaboration, we need to invite the high school coordinators so that they can learn a little bit more about what's going on with Maryville, and then as they are working with teachers to embed ACT practices within the core curriculum areas, there may be some things that we could learn through that. So that would be another partnership to look at, you know, what, what could our high school coordinators learn so that they could also support the counselors in embedding some of that work in the ongoing?
Started at Harris Stowe years ago.
It's actually at St. Louis University.
The one I visited was at Harris Stowe.
That was a, that was an eighth grade, I'm sorry, that was a ninth grade transitional class.
They were working on, they were working on college?
No, not, not a Harris Stowe.
Okay, well, it's down the block from Slough, so whatever. I remember going to Harris Stowe. Any thought about holding a program down there too, or is it just too expensive to do that?
Well, you know, when, when we held it at St. Louis University, initially, it was to offer the opportunity for our voluntary student transfers to, and then, and then that program was in June, and so we wanted to then offer the opportunity for the class in June and allowed residential students to go down to St. Louis University, but they had to provide their own transportation. When we brought it to the district, we felt there was a benefit that we could offer it for both residential and voluntary student transfers and provide transportation for all students. That was the thinking in bringing it back.
The VST kids, they can get out here easily?
Exactly.
A transportation problem?
No transportation.
It doesn't stop them from enrolling in it?
No.
Okay.
No. They, they ride the buses to the high schools, and then we shuttle them from the high schools over to Maryville. Haven't seen that. Would we like to increase the number of voluntary student transfers? Absolutely, yes. Try to get some more.
What's the capacity in Maryville?
You know, I don't, I, I think if we were to exceed 300, that would not be a problem. I think this time last year, we had a concern that there was not sufficient computer capacity. We, we transported district computers over to, to Maryville and used them in addition to the computers that Maryville provided for us. So I think we could continue to grow.
There's a second, there was a second section that was actually in July.
Correct. So. I know you were there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw you out there.
I, I wonder if anybody's looked at our students enrollment in Maryville since we started that program there? I wonder if our, we have more students that are so enthralled by their experience that they want to go to college there?
Well, Maryville doesn't, Maryville values their relationship with the Parkway School and, and they value having our students on their campus. I'll be happy to follow up with.
You know what, I, I, I think I can get that myself because that information's on Naviance, right? I think it is.
Well, we have information on what kids go to school on.
Yeah, it's.
Would you all connect with the program?
No, you don't know if they went through the program, but you can see we've had a dramatic increase in enrollment there. Just curious.
Sure.
It seems like every year, there are a number of students that try to get into the same course, and we just don't have enough personal finance. There's always kids that want to take that in, in camp. Is there some way to, and I don't know if that's just up and it happens every once in a while, or, and then my other question would be, you did a student survey and got some response back from them, even some suggesting various courses, some of which I wouldn't recommend, like Satan Worshiping 101, but there are some fun things.
The comments are always interesting.
So was there something that came out of that survey that was helpful to you as you go forward?
I think as much as anything, what I saw from parents and students was, number one, looking for more science and math. And so as Dr. Meredith indicated, we're working extremely hard to increase the number of STEM classes. I had a conversation today with an elementary principal about looking to get a higher-level math class in her school, and there's a teacher who offered a higher-level math class at Oakbrook last year, and I communicated with her today and asked if I could share her name and her course offering with all administrators. I think another thought that I, that I saw from parents was, sometimes they go to the brochure, they look for different enrichment offerings, and they see a course that's been offered a number of years, and so their child's already taken that class, and there aren't as many options for the class. One of the suggestions I have to administrators and have shared with administrators is to go to teachers and ask the teachers to see if they could come up with a, a rotation of classes that they could offer. They might be similar in nature, math-based, science-based, ELA-based, but not the exact same course every year. So there's a rotation of courses so that students would have some options, students and family would have some options.
So in particularly with the personal finance course, that is one of the courses that we're, we do hear about, we hear about that, and PE. Personal finance is one of the courses that the innovation team is looking at as a possible virtual course. PE becomes a little more challenging because of the limitation with facilities. The other piece that we learned through the survey and conversations is, as principals predict staffing for the following year, summer school staffing can also impact that. And so how do we balance the need and the staffing across summer school and the school year, but yet let student need drive that decision-making? But that's, that's a delicate problem-solving situation for our administrators, but facilities does limit PE, which is another one that we hear there's often not enough spots for, which is one of the reasons in cost reduction, at one point, we had considered going down to reducing the number of high school sites by one, and that would have been a hindrance to do that. And that's when the high school principals came together and said, let us look for other ways to reduce the cost without consolidating sites, and they were very successful in doing that and are committed to continue to look at ways to reduce cost at the high school
Likely see more week-long kind of camp approaches in the future, not this summer in the least in the future?
So the innovation team and I met earlier this week, and Mike, do we have a meeting next week?
Yes.
Next week? And we actually have some proposals. The innovation team has done some research to look at what it would cost to run some week-long camps. We now need Mike's expertise because he helps with the other, the, the general summer camp and then the athletic camps, sports camps that we offer. And so that's what our meeting about is next week. We are seriously considering offering a coding camp for elementary and middle school this summer. Again, this is contingent that we can work the expenditures out, but they have predicted how many teachers it would take, looking at having high school interns come in and help with that. They've talked to Will to see what the cost would be to transport them to one central location, so all of those are going on at a location. We'll start small and do, so for example, if we do coding this summer, we would do one week of coding at multiple sites and get it figured out so that then we could grow those types of camps in the future. Also looking at camp invention, identified other school districts in the area who do it so that we can have conversation with them and how do they come up? It looks like their pricing structure is consistent, so we need to do some more exploring. So the innovation team is taking the lead on the academic side of that, and then they'll be partnering with Mike next week to figure out the logistics of that. One of the things we've heard from other places, though, is, for example, the coding and camp invention, I've heard both fill up so fast, so the demand is usually bigger than the capacity, and so that was one of the challenges I threw to the innovation team, is how do we handle that? So I look forward to seeing now the joint collaboration of the expertise and experience of planning summer school and camps with the innovation knowledge of studying the content for those as they plan. We will know by the end of January because we have to have everything, those decided by February 4th, correct?
Correct.
So we will know in the next couple of weeks whether or not it's viable to offer those this summer. those this summer, or if we need the following year to plan. But we would like to at least test the waters with one this summer, but we'll be able to give you a report in a couple of weeks.
I noticed several comments on the teacher survey regarding IEP and receiving information in, in time and/or additional assistance. Are there plans to address those?
I've already, I've already spoken with area coordin, SSD area coordinators, and summer school administrators, and the administrators from their sister schools for ways that we can be sure that IEPs are provided to teacher, administrators and to teachers in a timely manner, so that everything's up to par on the first day of school.
Great.
And I'm going to PACC D next month to visit with them as well, to kind of share what our plans are.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yes?
Couple of number questions from the far end of the table here. First, budgetary, and I was, I appreciate your, your analysis that included the impact of VST funding on the relative site cost, if you will. But what I, what I was kind of wrestling with, because it was in, the, the two Maryville sessions were in, in different sections of the budget, that appendix one, I guess just overall, how did, how does the, the Maryville sessions, how do they compare with other sites on a per pupil expenditure?
They're, they're comparable. We've had a few glitches with separating out the Maryville programs and their costs.
Okay.
And, and charging them appropriately. Essentially, what we try to do is charge them to a school that's not being used for summer school. So for this past year, we would have charged one session to Central High and one session to Fernridge. Some of those costs were.
Cross-pollinated? I was gonna say, session to session, it didn't look like the per pupil cost made any sense at all.
Yes, they were.
Okay.
So I've, I've worked with Maureen Dennis, so that in the future, we can extract those specific costs and not have them blended in.
Okay.
School costs.
Super, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And then Dr. Tyson? Appendices three and four, what, did you have my name written on those?
Do you want them there here in this notebook?
Just a trout rising to the fly. Appendix three, which is the average cumulative GPA, and you indicate that there has been a statistically significant increase in high school student GPAs, tracing all the way, all the way back to 2006.
Sure.
And I was just, if you could expand a little bit on the methodology you used in that, that number crunching?
Sure.
And, and kind of step me through that if you could?
No problem. So really, we used what's called an analysis of variance, or an ANOVA. And really, all it, it's used for situations like this where we have, and actually, well actually, this was a paired sample t-test, because we have same students and we're just measuring them at different times. So we would take the students' GPAs prior to summer school, and then we would look at their GPAs post-summer school. And so actually, you mentioned, you know, the question came up earlier about ACT scores. And really, Lisa, it was good to reinforce that that is not necessarily caused, those ACT increases were not necessarily caused by the Maryville program, you know, that famous, the famous saying that correlation does not necessarily mean causation.
Right.
So that's an important thing to keep in mind, and I'm glad that we did keep that in mind. Really to know for sure whether or not Maryville had sort of caused it, you would need to really develop a very tight study, and it would take some time. But when we look at the GPAs here, we can say that summer school, in fact, caused the increase in GPA. Now, does that mean that summer school caused students to be smarter, or to be, you know, have higher achievement, or any of that? It may have, but, but with the GPAs, we actually can say, because those are just numbers, right?
Right.
I mean, it's, grades were higher and raised students' GPAs during summer school.
But if there's variance in grading standards, that might follow that?
Yes, it's, right, it's always possible, you'd always need to look at, you know, and keep in mind that grading standards and different, and rigor of courses that are offered. I mean, there's a lot of different variables that, that may factor into this, but the bottom line is that students who do take summer school, after summer school, have significantly higher GPAs.
Okay. And then that appendix four, and you kind of touched on it, but I guess my question would be, between the 2013 graduating class, where your, your sample size was 70 out of 1,450 graduates, and then 2014, where you had 123 out of 1,200 or so.
Sure, yeah.
Not enrolled. The fact that, is there any, anything significant in, in, what, essentially a, a sample size that's twice the, the percentage of the first one?
Yeah, and really, that's why we had to use a non-parametric test, so that kind of helped out. But really, whenever you do statistics, you want the, the groups to be as equal as possible.
Right.
So is this an ideal sort of perfect, you know, the numbers are looking perfect for us to do this analysis? No, not necessarily, but we still can look to see if there's a significant increase or not, even with the, with the differences. And what might have been a better, you know, some, what we could have done, I mean, there's always tons of different ways you can approach this, what we could have done is just pulled a random sample of the students not enrolled in Maryville, and just pulled randomly to get to about 123. Probably would ended up with about the same result, is my hunch. But, but yeah, I mean, you know, statistically, you can still run that analysis. Again, though, it's always better to have those, those numbers, those ends to be as close, as close to equal as possible. And again, you know, with, with students who are enrolled in the Maryville program versus not, there are so many other variables that factor in, you know, I mean, we aren't, you know, you didn't take 100 students and, or 200 students and split them in half and have 100, you know, totally randomly, 100, don't go to Maryville, 100 do. You know, that's really how you start to get close to being able to make these generalizations, where you can say, yes, this in fact is looking to be, you know, this is how researchers do it, right? They do the random, random splitting of groups, and, and you give one the treatment, and you give the other, you don't give the other group the treatment, and you, and then you compare, and you can see. So if we ever want to do anything like that, I would be very happy to do it. It's very hard, though. I mean, in, in education and school districts, we really don't, you know, we care so much about the students and the students' needs, that almost nothing in education is random. And, and probably, that's probably a good thing, you know, in general. But if you really want to get to the heart of whether or not a program is truly effective, you do need to start looking at, at random sampling, things like that.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Did that answer your questions?
It did. All right.
I'm sorry. I'm looking on Naviance, trying to, trying to navigate. I'm very good at Central High. It's the other three that are different. That's, that's, that's interesting, Chelsea, that I had never done that before. They're all different. Well, I was trying to look at the Maryville admissions, but when I try to go to Naviance and Family Connection and the four different high schools, like I'm very familiar with how to, how to maneuver in Central High, but I, I couldn't find it in North, South.
Family Connection.
Yeah, as a guest.
Every school will create their own Family Connection. Actually, they can, they can have parents of centrators who have nothing on Family Connection, parents of migrants who have nothing on. It depends on the, they have people on there who have, who have, who have to be able to migrate.
Wow. Okay, learn something new every day. Thank you. Are we done with questions? All right, great, well, thank you, everybody, appreciate that.
I just, observation, a lot of schools, you know, are talking about, in our society, about longer time for learning, and sometimes the discussion goes to longer school year, and then you get into this costs, and, and I, I think this approach of looking at, Lisa, her beginning when she took it, all those opportunities, including summer school, you know, in a subtle sort of way, we're, we're giving people longer, new opportunities to learn without dictating, or having to get into that kind of negotiations, or struggle with our, our own, our own publics about that. And hopefully, people will just take advantage of those things, and, and after a while, will have more natural learning opportunities versus, you know, so many days and so many opportunities. So I, I think it's a wonderful approach, and, and there's not a lot of people really doing this, quite honestly, right? I mean, if you've studied this, there's not a lot of models out there that, that really follow.
We have found models that are really good at parts of it, so like whenever we went to Blue Valley and the experiential learning for the high school students. I've looked at some summer schools at different locations around the country, and they do some really unique things with their summer school programs, with summer, with service learning, with real-world application, doing summer gardening, and building water filtration systems in the summer, and, but not comprehensive, that I have found connecting all of the pieces together like we're trying to do. And it feels messy right now, you know, that we have a group doing virtual learning, a group looking at experiential learning, looking at how to improve summer school, looking at our partnerships, and how do our partnerships give kids more opportunities, and then trying to bring all of those together. So I've not found a place that's, I've been able to find that's doing that, I'm sure they're out there, and I, I'll keep looking so that we can learn from them, but at this point, I haven't found them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. All right, we're going to proceed, work session, there is none. All right, here we go. Call for special meeting, January 24th, 2014. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education call for a special meeting on Friday, January 24th, 2014, at 8:30 at the Administration Building for the purpose of participating in the Parkway Rockwood Legislative Breakfast?
So move.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. 16.0, call for executive session, January 25th, January 28th, and February 12th, 2014. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education call for an executive session on Saturday? Can you say it for me? No, on Saturday, January 25th, 2014, at 8:00 a.m. at the Administrative Building. On Tuesday, January 28th, 2014, at 5:00 p.m. at Central Middle School, and on Wednesday, February 12th, 2014, at 6:00 p.m. and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the district in any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys. 610.021.1. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. Three, preparations on behalf of the district or its representative for negotiations with employment groups, including any discussion or work product. 610.021.9. And four, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. 610.021.13. Roll call, oh, sorry, yeah. You knew I was going to do that. I was anticipating, it's okay.
Mrs. Akval?
Yes.
Mr. Akval?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Overman?
Yes.
Director Saratino?
Yes, thank you.
17.0 recess, 18.0 closed meeting. 19.0, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So move. Second?
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries seven zero. We are finished with our close, so we will adjourn everything now. Thanks, everybody, for coming.